Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. Here's your flash briefing for the week of May 6th. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in council chambers in City Hall. If you can't watch, quickly catch up on city council meetings by subscribing to the council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at citylls.net. This week, May 5th or the 11th is Drinking Water Week. Let's celebrate the value of clean, safe water and the critical role it plays in our daily lives. Stop by Water Utilities at 1200 Southeast Hamblin Road during business hours this week to grab some goodies and refreshing drink from our hydration station. The city has partnered with the Community Blood Center for a blood drive on May 13th from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. at the city's maintenance facility located at 1971 Southeast Hamblin Road. The time to donate is now. Find a link to register on the city's website. And mark your calendars for this Saturday, May 11th for the Farmer's Market Spring Celebration from 8 a.m. to noon at the corner of Second and Douglas Streets. The first 100 kiddos will have the opportunity to decorate flower pots and plant a special flower for mom. You don't want to miss out on the fun. Learn more at downtownls.org. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here. And Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there. And he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. It's come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick. That's my repriori.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few of us are getting questions. I know I've gotten a few questions about the plan, so I didn't know if, just for the public knowledge. I'm not a politician. I feel like I'm just an average person in Lee Summit. They have a football field set up inside these cones or their football fields. Our two-car garage is going to, we're going to bring the driveway back through here and it's going to go right here. And then... So my family has chickens. When we first got chickens, my husband said, "Don't treat them as your pets. Treat them as chickens because we're going to end up, we're going to be eating the eggs and I would like to use them for meat." So don't treat them as your pets. Well, we now have six chickens that I consider my pets and I will not let him kill for meat. So we live downtown and we love living downtown. These are my children, the first one's Lincoln and Amira and Sophia and Caleb. This is a great neighborhood. Downtown is one big community. And all of the kids get together and they play basketball and we like to walk to the Farmer's Market. It's an easy walk, probably less than 10 minutes. The Farmer's Market has always been a very important part of my life and my family's life. As a matter of fact, when my daughter started kindergarten, I dropped her off and I was going shopping at the Farmer's Market right behind Lee Summit Elementary. And I was teary-eyed because she was my first and she was going off to kindergarten. And Terry, the butterfly lady, the one that's in the purple shirt and she used to make little butterfly stickers for everyone. She gave me a big hug and was just so empathetic to the fact that my daughter had just started school. Doing well? How are you?
Doing very good.
A lot of the farmers there, my kids have, they've watched my kids grow up. I love Lee Summit in general. I love that it still has a small town feel while embracing growth and the arts and diversity. And I feel like downtown specifically embodies that. My kids go to Lee Summit Elementary and a lot of their teachers live downtown. And a lot of the business owners from downtown live downtown. So when we're out walking downtown, we see so many people we know. I lived in Africa until I was five and then we moved to the United States. And I've lived in Lee Summit since. Oh, a lot of my childhood, my mom was a single mom. And I feel like I was essentially raised by my community and being on council. And it's just such an important way to give back to the community that raised me. The election process was fun. I got to go door to door and talk to people, which is my absolute favorite thing to do, is talking to people and learning about people. I even had people inviting me into their house for dinner or inviting me back to their house to meet their spouse. And I actually, I knocked on a door and the lady that answered the door was my kindergarten teacher. So it was a lot of fun. Is it on? Hi, everyone. I'm council member Mia Prior. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I have one on. Can you not? Maybe I might. I love being a council rep for District One. I know everyone says this, but District One is by far, in my opinion, the best district. Rain Tree Lake, that's part of District One. I love that city. Actually, my husband and I got married at the clubhouse in Rain Tree Lake. I really love all of South Lee Summit. I love the growth that they're going to be experiencing soon and that they've already experienced. I wanted to say that if you guys have a concern, please, please come tell us what your concern is because we can only, we can only address and help with what we know. We're there to kind of bridge that gap, bridge that gap between constituents in the city. And we're the voice of our constituents. And we can go to the city and voice what their concerns are, what their ideas are. So if you have a concern, definitely make us aware. So my big priorities are public safety. That's always one of my top priorities. I've always wanted to make sure that first responders were supported. I think that that's super important to me and to many in our city. But also, I, I wanted to influence the growth in Lee Summit. I wanted to influence the type of businesses we get here and the type of activities there are to do for our families. If we're going to continue to grow downtown, how important it is to focus on people that already live here and the infrastructure we already have in place.
Our first presentation tonight is going to be Assistant City Manager Ryan Ehlum, who's going to talk about that very exciting Farmer's Market Plaza.
But I want to show you the most recent rendering, fly-through video of that. That's really the best way to kind of get a good sense of what this will look like in the near future.
To see it developing into something as big as it's going to be across from City Hall is super exciting to me. I can't wait for it to get built and to start welcoming people into what the Farmer's Market is going to be, but also everything else that goes along with that development. Do you want to hold it? Drop it.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Have a good rest.
I'm just an average person in Lee Summit that wanted to be a voice of many that, that sometimes feel like they don't have a voice. Yeah, I'm not a politician. I'm just a mom that cares.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Father, bless those in attendance tonight to help us show a clear path for our work tonight. Help us to be attentive to each other and be considerate of all viewpoints. Bless our community and assist us in the fostering of the betterment of our neighborhoods by listening to the voices of our citizens. Amen.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session Number Two. Could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hodges?
Here.
Councilmember Rader?
Here.
Councilmember DeMaro?
Here.
Councilmember Lovell?
Here.
Councilmember Prior?
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle?
Present.
Councilmember Shields?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Okay, before we get started on the agenda, Councilmember Rader.
I am requesting that Item B, the appointment to replace Cinda Rader as Planning Commissioner, be taken off the consent agenda for further consideration.
Okay. City Clerk, can you please move the agenda item 2B and put it right after the consent agenda? I get a motion to adopt the agenda. Councilmember DeMaro makes a motion to adopt the agenda. Councilmember Shields has seconded, as amended, council discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda, less Item 2B. I have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Rader, just...
Voice vote, yes.
Thank you. All votes are in. Please record the vote. So we pulled Item 2B. I would need a motion for the mayor's appointments for councilman, for the planning commission. Could I get someone? Councilmember Shields, would you read it, please, for me?
And this is for all of the appointments, Board of Appeals and everything, since was all of 2B pulled out?
No, just Item 2B. He wanted just the Item 2B with the appointment of Sherri Fraser pulled out.
I'm happy to read just that one, but can city attorney confirm that's the only one, was that properly pulled out by itself?
I believe that was the intention and given that it's consent agenda and it's...
I just want to make sure we don't accidentally misappointing those other folks, so...
No, I don't think so. That's not the way I understood it.
Okay. So I would move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Sherri Fraser to the Planning Commission to replace the unexpired term of Cinda Rader, term to expire for 15/27.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the appointment to the Planning Commission by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember DeMaro. Discussion? Councilmember Rader?
Request to speak. Okay. I will be voting no on this appointment for this reason. As a former Planning Commissioner, I feel the qualities of the Planning Commission should involve a strong foundation in building construction, land development, knowledge of real estate and business development, as well as real-life experience. My hope would be that our appointee would have served on other boards and commissions as a prerequisite to understand how our city operates and that other applicants more suited would be considered. The Planning Commission is extremely important to the success of Lee Summit as a vetting and recommending board through the expertise and knowledge that is currently held by its members. And I would like to see that continue with the new member that is selected. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I respect Councilmember Rader's opinion and I appreciate the time that she spent serving on the Planning Commission. I do think it's important to have people from all different kinds of backgrounds and experiences on these citizen boards and commissions. So it's, I think it's good to have a mix of both real estate professionals and also just members of the community that bring different perspectives to it. So I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Prior?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to start by saying that I feel like council's put in a really tough position right now. I understand Councilmember Rader's point completely. I understand Councilmember Shields' point completely. I think that this entire process needs to be a little more transparent than what it currently is. I think that we could have completely avoided this taking place at a meeting on a two, like this entire thing at a meeting if we would have had a more transparent process in place and something that council has to vote on and put their name on. If, if, if you would have come to us for our opinions, just to, just to have open dialogue. So I'm not sure how I'm going to vote because, like I said, I understand both opinions. I just am all for transparency and I wish that the process was different. So thank you.
Okay, so I've taken, I would just, real quick, I take recommendations from council members nonstop on boards and committees and I have for six years and I've appointed hundreds and reappointed hundreds of people to boards and commissions. And so I definitely listen to the council members and had recommendations on this one from council members that I didn't take. I interviewed people and chose who I thought was the best fit for the Planning Commission and for a multitude of reasons, from engagement to their background in public policy, to their job as being employed with the Department of Health, to, again, the engagement in the community, but also the detail-oriented understanding of what it is to be a Planning Commissioner. So not easy. I've appointed many people that got engaged by running for office, if that's what you're implying. But for those that made recommendations I didn't accept, I'm sorry, you can vote no on this. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I, I feel like we have a really transparent process. I really appreciated the way that city staff and the mayor have taken our feedback on this process. For example, changing to the two-thirds majority for anyone who's not a resident of Lee Summit, requiring that, like taking that feedback into account. We want a little bit more scrutiny of those kind of appointments, to making the full applications of the proposed appointments available for us to look at and showing us a list of all the folks who submitted interest forms. So I, I feel like it's a really, to me, a really transparent process. But at the same time, I respect that the charter provides for the mayor to make these appointments. And, and then it's up to us to review them. And if we feel like they're not qualified for some reason, we can vote no. But it's really his prerogative to, based on everything that he's looking at, you know, qualifications, the application, interviewing them, listening to feedback from council members to take all that and then make an appointment, which the council then ratifies or doesn't. So I, I guess I understand the concerns, but I, I feel like we have as transparent of a process as we could hope for, especially given the way that our charter is structured that does put this power vested in the mayor. So, but I appreciate the, the feedback there too and I think it's good dialogue.
Thank you. Councilmember Prior?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess when I say transparent, I mean more the applications. We've been asking to review them for a long time. And we got those, I guess, pretty late last night to finally review them. And this is nothing against, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, this is nothing against the appointment to the Planning Commission. I just want, like you said, we have to review the appointments. It's our job to review the appointments. It's kind of hard when we don't have the applications in front of us. So I just, I, I want to see a process where if we're expected to vote on it, I would like to see the applications to make sure that, you know, it's hard to put your name on something when you haven't seen the applications. It's hard to review something when you haven't seen the applications. But as far as... But as far as the Planning Commission appointment, I, this is, this is nothing about the Planning Commission appointment. This is just about our process more so, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I want to say that I respect the mayor and his decisions, and I understand his authority in this, as I was selected by the mayor to be on the Planning Commission. And I actually thought at the time that we, he interviewed me over the phone, that he said, he didn't use the word "vet," but he said that he would have to get the approval of the council, and so, as I understood it, I thought that he went back to the council and there was an advisory meeting or whatever to vet the member and, or the candidate, and then we went from there. So, this has been a learning experience for me, and I just felt like that I needed to do my due diligence, and we did get a copy of the applications today so that we could review, and so, I would like to see that, as well as more transparency with that, and just, I don't know, a little more involvement with just understanding that we could have a say, but also understanding that the mayor has the authority to make the final decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dunn, we'll have to figure out how to be more transparent with the applications.
Yeah, I know, we have a system for that, and I know the data comes in and working on formatting and things like that, because it's not a paper application to get submitted, so I know we're working on that.
Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. We're voting for Sherri Frazier on the Planning Commission.
It was just pulled out of the consent agenda and put as its own separate item?
Correct. One more vote. Rader, do you want to do a...
Just a point of, can you not abstain from the vote? Can you abstain from voting?
Mr. Head?
You do have the ability to abstain from voting, however, I have, I remind periodically, you were elected to vote. You were elected to make decisions, and this is me reminding you of your duty, but unless you have a conflict, you should vote. That's not saying you have to, but it's just a reminder that voting when it's uncomfortable, or refusing to vote when it's uncomfortable, is really a rough thing to do, and you have to ask yourself if you're really at that point, if you are representing the folks that you're here for, because you were elected to make votes, to take hard votes. So, yes, abstention is always a possibility. Any councilmember can abstain without any, without any reason given, if you wish to, but under the common law, you do have that obligation to vote unless you have a conflict.
So, what's the difference between recusal and abstaining from a conflict?
Well, realistically, everything should be an abstention for what we do. Now, recusal is often used, that's really a legal term, that is most often used by judges, but it typically means that the person has some sort of official legal conflict. Typically, an abstention with an explanation of legal conflict is sufficient. Recusal, abstention, use either word that you wish to, but typically, a recusal's going to have a more legal term of art sort of term than an abstention.
Why do we have the abstain from voting? I mean, because you're right, and I appreciate the lecture on what we're supposed to do up here, but that also is, abstaining is also exercising my ability as a councilmember to abstain from a vote, and for whatever reasons that might be, too. So, that is a tough decision, just as voting yea or nay is, correct?
Absolutely. I'm not denying any of that at all, and I did not mean it to be a lecture, just a reminder from time to time.
All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes five to three with one abstention. Next, we have the mayor's appointment of the Mayor Protem. He's served for many years now, Mayor Protem Lopez, Councilmember Lopez. I'm appointing him a yes again this year. He gets the fun duties of appointing people to committees, such as the Finance and Budget, Public Works, CDC, and more, and appreciate all the years and your availability and the time you take to do this for us, and you too, Mayor Protem Lopez. Next, we have Council Roundtable. Oh, yeah, please, Mayor Protem Lopez.
Mayor, just publicly thank you for continued confidence in my abilities to serve council in this capacity, and I thank my colleagues on the council as well for trusting and having the confidence in me. As you all know, I'm pretty transparent and inclusive in any decisions that are made, so that will continue, so I appreciate your cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Council Roundtable. It is, it is on my agenda as a motion. Is that, Mr. Head, will you vote on that over here? I didn't think so. Which item, Mayor? Mayor Protem. Yeah.
No, it's not a, it's not a voting item.
Council Roundtable. Councilmember Shields?
Want to wish a Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers in the dais and in the room today.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. Is this weekend Mother's Day? Oh, I don't know. I don't, we've been so busy with soccer lately that I feel like I haven't, I do, yes. Okay, so, I just wanted to say that, of course, it's that time of year again, but the farmer's market's open, so, and I was there last Saturday. There are a ton of tomato plants and vegetable plants and a lot of nice things, so, and it was fun, a big crowd, and it was even raining, and there was still, like, sprinkling a little, and there was still a big crowd, so be sure to support the farmer's market, and it's still in the old location across from Elevate, as of right now, until, I guess, what, next year? Would that be the first year that it'll be in the new location? Yep, right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other Council Roundtable? Okay, let's, let's do some proclamations, then. We've, here we are? Yes, we are. Let's go, oh, we've got Building Safety Month first, so could I get the Director of Development Services and anybody else that you'd like to come down with you, sir? Good, you brought a crew. Thank you all for being here. Whereas the City of Lee's Summit is committed to recognizing our growth and strength depends on safety and essential roles of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when natural disasters strike. Whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities' largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. Whereas Mission Possible, not impossible, Mission Possible is the theme for the Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee's Summit, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Building Safety Month. All right. Who do you have with you here, sir, and what's your name?
I'm Joshua Johnson. I'm the Director of Development Services. If I may say a few words, Mayor, and I'll introduce everybody. But I just wanted to say, building safety is something that is accomplished through many different knowledge groups and different divisions within Development Services and with groups outside of Development Services. It takes technical expertise in a variety of areas to make sure that our built environment is safe. Our first group I'm going to introduce is headed up by our Deputy Director, Amy Nassif, and Tracy Deister. They manage our Codes Administration Division. Fun fact here, Tracy has been with the city for 29 years. They manage a, thank you. They manage a variety of plans examiners, and that's a very technical job, and what they do is they look at the building plans when they come in, and they make sure they meet the various codes. In fact, this year, we're adopting a new set of codes that occurs every six years, and that allows the city to keep current with all the latest building safety features and technologies. Once plans are approved, we move out to the field where our inspection staff takes the baton from there. Mark Harding is our Building Inspections Manager, and Steve Robbins is over our Field Division. During the entire process, our Fire Marshal, Jim Eden, and his team, they look at both plans and they do inspections in the field. You may know that they also, every year, they go to facilities such as restaurants, they look at the, the systems in those restaurants to make sure that if there's a kitchen fire, that it gets put out quickly and saves the building. Jim's team makes sure through building design and the sprinklers in the building that if there's an emergency, people can get out of the building in a timely fashion, and that the building is saved as much as possible through those systems. Last but not least, I wanted to highlight the city's Central Building Services Division. Carrie here is representing that group. They take care of all the city buildings. They're responsible for the upkeep and the maintenance. You may know that week in before last, City Hall was struck by lightning. It took out all of our rooftop units that cooled the building. Our Central Building Services worked tirelessly with outside contractors to get the parts needed to fix those units. We had to get a very old circuit board factory-direct, and they had to be programmed. It was a very long process, so if you're in the building, thanks for suffering silently. I just wanted to end, wrap up, that our city is growing rapidly, as I think everybody in this room knows, and it's with all of these professionals that we know it's going to grow safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get them all? You did announce them all, didn't you?
Yeah.
Okay. How about a photo, then? Thank you all. Thank you all for being here. Okay, next is Drinking Water Week. Can I get the water staff? Tom, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Come on in. Yep, I'll scoot over. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene, needs for the quality of life of our citizens enjoy, tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. Whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on transport, to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumer taps. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend, the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our source, our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee's Summit, I do hereby proclaim May 5 through 11 as Drinking Water Week. All right. Thank you. Would you like to start us off?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'd like to just say a few words before I allow my colleagues here to introduce themselves and what they do, but I wanted to do something a little bit different here today. So, by a show of hands, how many of you all have a water bottle, a Stanley, or a reusable cup filled with tap water right now? Raise your hand. Okay, bottled water doesn't count. Okay, we've got some. All right, so you guys, hold that thought. You're going to be able to participate in this activity. For those that didn't, next year, bring some. You will be able to participate along with that. But wanted to just say, did you know that bottled water is way more expensive, of course, than tap water? It's also not as regulated as much as what we do with the tap water that we provide to the citizens of Lee's Summit as well. Also, you want to think about, whenever you're thinking about turning on the tap versus bottled water, the impacts to the environment as well, and those plastics and what that will do, and so, every bottle saved of those plastic, every time you fill with a reusable water, that's another great tool for us to be doing our part to taking care of the world for the future as well. But also, what I want to do, though, is to, for all those reasons, I actually want to raise a toast to our drinking water here in Lee's Summit. And so, one of the, for the main reasons, first, of course, I've got some represented here today from our 75-plus FTEs that we have on staff that work hard 365 days a year to deliver reliable water and wastewater services to the community. So, to the men and women of Lee's Summit Water Utilities, plus to that high-quality H2O that we get from our water service providers who, you may not know, are also national award-winning for taste. If you didn't know that, that's a real thing. That happens. So, we have award-winning taste water. It's the best in the country along that, as well. We've also heard from many of you at the downtown days and Oktoberfest that how much that Lee's Summit blend and how great it tastes. So, we want to celebrate that. And lastly, again, just taking the opportunity to appreciate the water, the role it plays in the community, and that it sustains life in our community as well. So, to Lee's Water Utilities, here, here. Don Bennett, Assistant Director of Customer Care.
Well done.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Young. I'm the Assistant Director of Water Operations.
Sarah Miller. I'm the Community Relations Specialist, and thanks to Drinking Water Week, I encourage all of you to come by our service center. We have goodies and things set up in the lobby, so you can come hang out, you know, meet some people, and we also partnered with all of the libraries in the city, so we have displays there as well.
Good evening. Joe San Nicholas, Financial Services Manager.
Dana R. Curry, Contract and Record Specialist.
Brian Hatfield, Meter Services Supervisor.
Brent Poise, Assistant Director of Business Services.
Stacy Higgins, Customer Service Supervisor.
Thank you all for coming and being here tonight. Can you take a photo with me here? Thanks again. Next, we have National Historic Preservation Month. Josh Johnson coming forward. Dave Ames is here. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for preserving community history, managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and ethnic backgrounds. Whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of our heritage that has shaped us as people. Whereas National Preservation Month 2024, People Saving Places, is the nationwide theme sponsored by National Trust for Historic Preservation. Whereas remember, in remem- Whereas in remembrance of the Lee's Summit history and notable historical, historic figures, the Lee's Summit Cultural Commission encourages all residents and visitors of Lee's Summit to celebrate the role of history in our lives and champion the preservation of our community as it grows and develops in the future. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee's Summit, I hereby proclaim May 2024 as National Historic Preservation Month. All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for being here. Mr. Eames?
Mayor, I just wanted to say a few words. I'm, uh, I don't have the two pages like the last one. I wanted to start off by thanking our volunteers on the Cultural Commission for their involvement in historic preservation. This is one of the commissions that took on Historic Preservation Commission, the Beautification Commission, and our Arts Commission. And the reason I think this is an important aspect of that group is that in both our Comprehensive Plan and our Strategic Plan, cultural resources was a very important part of both those efforts. It's a way to ensure that our future generations have that connection back to the rich history of Lee's Summit.
Eames?
Thank you, Mayor. As the Chair of the new Cultural Commission, history is one of our top five priorities going into this next two years. So we're excited to partner with the city and other groups here in Lee's Summit to make sure that we shine the brightest light we can on our historic heritage here in Lee's Summit.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for doing this proclamation for us. That takes us to the next part of our evening, which is the business at hand, public hearings. First one we have on the agenda is, I'm going to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the, or Agenda Item 6A, which is a public hearing application for Unified Development Ordinance Amendment. The City of Lee's Summit is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk?
Good evening. Amy Nassif, Deputy Director of Development, here tonight to present a series of Unified Development Ordinance updates. And the package for this evening all involves residential lot development. So as with all the work that we do, especially with our Unified Development Ordinance, tonight's updates further advance our goals and our implementation strategies outlined in our Strategic Plan. Tonight specifically, I'll cover under the strong neighborhoods and housing choice goals. And those include the goal to maintain thriving, quality neighborhoods, to connect a diversity of residents, and also create and maintain the variety of housing options, styles, and price ranges. So tonight, we have about four articles that we're updating with the whole series, and I'll walk you through each of those, and also have redline copies in the packets for you as well. All these series were the updates that we collaborated with the Community Economic Development Committee back in January, and then also that were presented to Planning Commission without any changes. So I'll get underway here. So the first set of updates and things that we were looking at was our lot sizes, the narrow and small lots that we have and that are available in Lee's Summit. And realize that, you know, we have had some really great success with some smaller and narrow lot developments, and what that does also is it helps advance some of our missing middle housing goals that we have, because the smaller lots, the more narrow lots, then you have the smaller homes and the different price points available for affordable or attainable housing. And this is just some examples. The photos on the left and the right are both from developments in Lee's Summit, and the one in the center is just another example in the metro. And so with that, and looking at what our lot sizes are for single-family residential development, first thing we notice is that single-family detached homes are actually currently not permitted in one of our residential districts. And so this chart is excerpted exactly from our UDO, like our Use Matrix, and you can see where the, the red P, that stands for permitted use. So the RP4 district is one of our higher-density residential development districts, and it allows all the other types of residents except for single families. So first recommendation set was to add that, add that in. And then also zero lot line development. It's not something we see very often, but it is another single-family or two-family type of residence development is currently omitted in our R4 district. So again, just to advance some of the housing diversity options in more districts, we're recommending putting that in the R4 district as well. So with that, now that single-family residences would be permitted, or proposed to be permitted in the RP4 district, the district already has minimum lot size and density established. That's why it's in black here, 3,500 square feet, and the 12 dwelling units per acre is what that represents, because it does currently allow like two-family, three-family, and other type of residences, but we don't have a minimum lot width established. And so our next update then is to establish that in that district. And in doing so, we looked at surrounding communities like we always do, and also what our current district regulations are, and that is how we came up with our recommendation for a 35-feet lot width. And these were also in discussions and talking with our stakeholders and folks such as the HBA as well. Then moving right along with the other updates, we have to do a little bit more of a house cleaning effort, but we do have subdivision standards as well, and with including the 35-foot lot widths in the R4 district, we just need to clean up this other section as well, just to add this caveat that unless otherwise approved during rezoning or plan review, each lot would have that minimum of 50 feet unless otherwise approved. So that just helps keep everything lining up with the updates that we're doing. So for single-family density, we looked at as well what our surrounding neighbors or communities have, and we currently have that recommendation of 12 dwelling units per acre seems to work well for the RP4 district. And this is the Use Standards chart. So the Use Standards chart contains all of our residential districts currently with the density, the minimum lot size, and the lot width requirements. And so this table also gets updated with these, with these changes. In addition, we had some other just housekeeping items. For instance, currently in the RP1 district in our code, this chart or table, excuse me, discusses or identifies a six-acre with bonuses. That was an old, actually leftover, design option that's no longer in our code, so we just need to strike that. And then also language referring to clusters, and clusters may vary, that's identified elsewhere in our code. So it's just a matter of cleaning up the table. And that same language, just again to clean up the table, is in our RP2 and RP3 district. So cluster development options still allowed in those districts. It's just, it's in another section of code and not necessary to be in this table as And then the other changes to the RP4 will include some density and other items to specify now for multifamily that we'll get into later in this presentation as well, because now that single family's allowed in the RP4, we just needed to distinguish exactly what the requirements are in this table by the certain residence type. So the first thing we want to talk about moving along to multifamily is open space. And so one of the things staff is also recommending is a minimum open space requirement in lieu of a lot size requirement for multifamily development. So multifamily development is our apartments, anything of five families or more units, excuse me. And so right now, currently, the UDO identifies how the massing and the scale that should be with height requirement, but also uses a minimum lot size, which really doesn't work for buildings of that size and scale for apartments. So instead, we're looking at recommending a open space requirement to help control that scale and size. And so looking again, we always look and compare and see what our friends and neighbors have for open space requirements. Currently, our planned residential districts do require a minimum of just 10% open space in all of our developments. So we looked back and looked at some data, and our last 12 multifamily projects, this represents around the last five years or so, the average open space that we are getting already from developers is over 40%. So we're already getting that amount in all of our developments, and so staff is recommending just dipping our toe in that water and having a 30% open space requirement for multifamily. This way, it just codifies and establishes what our expectations are. And so that would be put and plugged right into that Use table in our matrix as well with everything else. The other just housekeeping item with this, housekeeping item, excuse me, with this table is, you might see these little quotation marks here. Instead of having the actual requirement in our current code language, it just has these little quotation marks. And so it's really difficult times for, for the general public to understand what that means. So the other housekeeping item is just to call out exactly what the requirement is instead of doing that. Improves and increases that readability. So then moving on to a little bit more discussion about density, other housekeeping items is currently in our UDO. So this is, this set of series here is not changing any requirement. This is just a matter of cleanup. All of our resident districts right now identify what your density requirement is twice on the same page. It first says density is established in a table elsewhere, and then, as you see here in line, item number five, then below, it tells you what the density is. So it's just cleaning this up and cleaning up that language to refer everybody to that Use table, but, but no actual change. And that's in all of the residential districts from RP1 through. So then for multifamily density, while we're still looking at providing increased housing options and opportunity and such, we looked at that density as well. And something that we've been noticing is the 12 dwelling units per acre for a multifamily or apartment development is really quite low. And we almost every single time see a modification request to that density, and it is almost every, it's every time, actually, that's asked, it is approved. So looking back again, the last five years of projects, only one of our multifamily projects met that density requirement, and the densities that we are seeing that City Council is approving is an average of 22 dwelling units per acre. And then even when you take into account our PMIX district, which allows like the greatest flexibility to uses and whatnot, it's still, you're getting an average of around 21 dwelling units per acre, with the highest being around 35 or 40 dwelling units per acre. So since this is what we're already been seeing for about five years or so now, they are getting, they are approved whenever they come forward, staff is recommending increasing that density to just reflect the actions of the city to 25 dwelling units per acre. Doesn't change any of the requirements. They still have to get there, you know, meet all of our standards, and that's just, it's just a max, not a minimum. So. And then in our definitions, just as important but a little, little more boring, just a housekeeping item, is our multifamily dwelling definition needed to be updated since we do have two-family, three-family, and fourplexes identified in our code. We needed to update the multifamily definition because it no longer means three or more families. It does mean five, and that's how it's put into practice as well. So it's just a housekeeping cleanup. Along with that zero lot line development that I mentioned earlier, while we don't have many or any come in, it is an option in our code, and so with that, we always want to have a definition to explain what that kind of development is, so it's just including a definition here. And then I believe the last set is our cluster development. So cluster development is a type of planning site design where you're balancing that residential growth with preservation of open space and natural topography, natural areas, tree preservation, things of that sort. So, and where developments are allowed to cluster or move their homes closer together. It's also then known sometimes as conservation or open space zoning. So right now in our code, we do allow, in the RP1, 2, and 3 districts, we allow a cluster development option. Our code does currently say, if you'd like to elect to choose this option, please see Article 8 for the design standards. Unfortunately, there's, we don't have anything to address this in our Article 8 currently. So this is just a matter of cleaning this up and putting the, those expectations into our UDO. So again, doing research on what's around in the area and how the focus is on that open space and that minimizing your grading, minimizing your land disturbance, staff is proposing these are the, the three main criteria that we're looking for, for a cluster development option. And this is the intent, we believe, of what was meant to be put in there years ago, too, when the, the cluster development was originally written. But this way, we have it now in our code, so fully transparent to what the expectations are. Requires a minimum open space percentage, requires sidewalks, pedestrian connectivity, and you must be at least five acres or size and more, or more. So with all this, with all the research and drafting that we did, again, we were presented and worked with the CEDC in November and also January, and recommended approval from them. And then Planning Commission Public Hearing was held on March 28th, or recommended approval, and then we're happy to be before you this evening and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, very good. Did you have any exhibits to enter into the record?
I am so sorry.
All right.
Yes. Would like to enter Exhibit A, list of exhibits one through six, one through 18.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, one through 18.
I don't have to start all over again with the rest of it, do I?
No.
Okay. I'm happy to, I guess, but it wouldn't be great.
Okay. Are there questions for Ms. Nassif? Yes, Councilmember tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Amy, the RP4, since it is a, since it allows a 3,500-square-foot lot, would that be, um, we're talking cluster homes then, right? Probably with the 35-foot frontage.
You would be closer together. You may not be a cluster development in that terms, but you would be, the lots would be narrow at 35-foot wide instead of our general. And we do have, the ones on the left and the right, as mentioned earlier, those are examples of in Lee's Summit, now of Pergola Park, I believe is where those are. Yes, you would be, you still have to meet side setback requirements.
Right. But with the, with the open space, with the green space and everything, it would be, somebody could come in and, and build, you know, four or five 35-foot wide, and then they've got the open space and they would meet the RP4, right?
So it's two separate things. So the cluster development is not an option in the RP4, because it already has smaller and more narrow lots in that development. The RP1, 2, and 3 would let you get there, and they'd have to meet those requirements to be considered.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. Amy, can you fly back to your, your slide on the 25 units per acre? The one that said that we were finding, you were finding that more and more people were being approved for more density? And, oh, that's the one. Average approved was 22. So then my question is, why did you, it said the average approved was 22 dwelling units an acre, so why did you go up to 25? Just to...
Because 22 is just the average. We're seeing up to 35.
Okay.
35, 32, 30. And then, so with what we've been seeing and what's been approved, and then also practices in the area, that's how we got to the 25. And then also, we, in discussion with Home Builders Association.
Okay. So do you know if, on the urban space zoning, which I like, I know we're doing it in Pergola Park, and maybe, there may be other projects that are going to be coming forward that are going to be using that as well, I'm guessing? And my comment for that is just like, that might be a solution for some parks as well, because you've got more open space there. So maybe not as much expense. It's just a comment, so, just to put out there. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to, go back to the slide where it shows the three houses? Sorry.
No, no, you're good. There.
Yep. Okay, so I know that this question will probably come up, but can you go over like where the off-street parking is on these? Like, you said the left and the right one were in Lee's Summit already.
Yes, the, one development has it, about 20 of their 124 units are Pergola Park, and the other one is Madison Park, where about 18 of their units are the more narrow out of the 72.
But there's no on-street park. There's still driveway park, like off-street parking, the three- that's required because of the required parking?
Yes.
Okay, where do they, in an example like this, where is the driveway? Is it just behind it or is it?
It could be behind it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Yes, Councilmember Carlyle.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on what Councilmember Prior was asking, just so I can better understand. So with those developments that have the smaller lots and they're closer together, there is required parking off-street, but there also allows on-street parking, is that correct?
It depends on the development, whether or not on-street parking is going to be allowed, but every development has, depends on the zoning district. Some of our districts still require two, two covered parking spaces and then some require one covered parking space. Any modification to that at all would have to go through with the zoning and come back to you all.
Okay, and so how do they figure how many parking spaces for each home? Is it the size of the home? How many garage spaces they have? Like, how is that figured?
So our standard is based on the zoning district type, as I mentioned, just like to two. Now, how many spaces are built by the developer is up to them and what kind of model they want to build. Sometimes it's two, sometimes it's three. Depends on the housing stock style that they're going for.
Okay, but there's nothing in our zoning that requires each house have at least X amount of spaces?
There is.
Okay.
Some, couple of our districts is at least one covered space. And then some, we also have districts where it's at least two.
Okay, and then what about just driveway space? Is there any requirement on that?
No.
None at all? Okay, thank you.
Unless I'm wrong. I don't think there is, no.
Thank you. Councilmember Prior.
Thank you. So in the zoning, like R P four, is that just blanket, like, does that allow on-street parking?
No.
That one doesn't?
They still, they still have to when they come to us with their site layout, show us how they're going to meet all requirements, setbacks, parking and everything.
And then if they wanted to allow on-street parking, that would have to come before?
Yes.
That part would come?
It would have to be reviewed thoroughly vetted, yes.
Okay. And then in a case where they do want on-street parking, does the, are they wider roads? I mean, so emergency vehicles can pass, but?
Yeah, I mean, typically things that we look at are going to be wider roads. We do need emergency vehicles to still be able to pass. It's the type of the street, the type of the development, how crowded and busy it is. We work with Public Works on that, our engineering group as well.
I just don't want to see us approving anything that
No.
allows all of the on-street parking.
Absolutely.
But we've gone over, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Please come forward. All right, any additional questions from the council? Nassif, do you have any further comment?
No, sir, thank you very much.
Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Yes, Councilmember Shields.
Mayor, I really like this. As someone in my day job who actually spends a lot of time reviewing zoning codes, just the cleanup changes alone are great. Like when you're going through this and there's contradictory things and things that are referenced that aren't there, it's very frustrating and, and time consuming for anyone who wants to build, trying to figure out if they're going to be in compliance with the requirements. So that's great. I think adding some of these narrower lots in R P four, we've, we've had a lot of discussion about more efficient use of infrastructure, that you get more bang for your buck with roads and with sewer and everything like that, when you're able to put more houses in that same length of road. So I like that. And I like, I know I've been one of the people who keeps banging the drum about this. If we're always approving variants for something, why don't we just make it our code? So I appreciate those changes as well. So of course there's more, I would love to see, I think more we can do, but I think this is in the right direction with all of it, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Prior.
I know this came before C E D C quite, quite a bit and I, I just like this and I like that you've worked so hard on cleaning so many, so many things up. So I just really like, I like what we're doing here and I, I'm actually excited to see it go forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Demoral.
Thank you, Mayor. Amy, thank you and the, and the staff for, for all the hard work. I appreciate the cleanups also and, and making pledgeable to somebody that is interested in coming and building. And I'm, as has been said, I'm, I'm pretty excited about that R P four. That's going to open up the door for a lot of people to best in Lee Summit and other, another choice. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further comments or questions, Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 24 dash zero eight zero?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of Bill number 24 dash zero eight zero in ordinance amending Chapter 33 of the Lee Summit Code of Ordinances, Article Four pertaining to zoning districts, Article Six pertaining to use standards, Article Seven pertaining to subdivisions, and Article 15 pertaining to rules of interpretation and definitions for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 24 dash zero eight zero by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlyle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Ananmas, it goes to second reading, thank you all. Next, I would need a motion to continue the next public hearing to May 21st. Councilmember Shields, would you make that motion out loud, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to continue item 2023 5932, public hearing and application number P L 2022 357 to a date certain of May 21st, 2024.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to a date certain of May 21st, 2024 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Mayor P. Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Ananmas, thank you all. Next, we have public comments. We will start with Mr. Lester Masood. Leave? Did he leave? Okay. Then we will go with Ms. Fick.
Hello. I am going to quote section. It's 1804 point four point one, site grading shall be amended to add the following language. All drainage facilities shall be designed to carry waters to the nearest drainway, sewer, storm, conveyance, or approved collection prevented by installation of erosive control devices unless specific drainage ways and swells are specifically approved by the building official. And it goes on, no one can abstract or install or maintain any drainage way, detention, or engineering swell that causes ponding or on adjacent property or diverts water onto adjoining properties. I have a picture of, I don't know how we...
Can we get the overhead, please?
Okay, so I highlighted in yellow some of the pools in our area and this is my neighbor's pool right here. And by far the largest, here's another smaller pool. This is an in-ground pool. This is the summit for the park. Anyways, a little drain park, spray park. This is what my yard used to look like. You can see how flat it is all the way back. Here's the picture from last week to remind you what it looks like. This is what it looked like today. After it was mowed, there's a, those are big, big ruts in my yard now. And here's a picture of what my yard used to look like. I had flowers, I had, you know. And this is my neighbor's fence. This is the first fence that they put up and they fixed it because of the water. And this is when we first started getting a lot of water. And this is, well, my neighbor's fence today. It's in my yard. It's from all the water. And this is all the brush that we can't keep down. I had the mowing guy here, he left all this. This is my backyard where the mowing guy got it. It was just violets growing, but it looked quite at the damage. This is what it looked like before. And just so you remember, this is one of the pictures of all the water that comes from his yard into mine. And I had some other pictures, but I didn't have time to get them. I do have this plot map and my neighbor lives right here and there's three places where he drains his water. It pools all the way down here. I had to build a berm to protect my house and it goes all the way down to my neighbor behind these houses. And that's, there's three houses here. It's 150 feet. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That would bring up Ms. Vollenwider.
Teresa Vollenwider, 5201 Northeast Maybrook Road. I'm going to put that there. That's a state law. And I'm going to start off with a conversation that Officer Eisberg had with Stephanie Mullins. That's a neighbor of mine. Eisberg says, that roadway where that road comes through over there, probably even going over to where that dang pin is over there, that roadway, I mean, that's on her property, her being me. But of course, the city has a right of way on it for public use, so the public can use it. Stephanie Mullins' response is, okay, I see what you are saying. She continues with, you know, it's really sad too, and I mean this completely, is that I said to the city a long time ago, when this all, because I said, gotta make sure that driveway can go there because if it isn't supposed to be there, she continues, I let you all know where I got all this. So you can, you can get access to this, you can watch it all so that you don't think I'm trying to hide anything from you. That was November 22nd. Then on November 25th, immediately before I was arrested, Officer Beaman called Stephanie Mullins. Beaman says, have you ever trespassed her from your property? Stephanie Mullins says, yeah, I mean, yes. We, she went out there trimming a tree that is not, that's on our property that, and when we called Officer Eisberg, like, Eisberg is the one I was talking about before. Eisberg, okay, Beaman says. Stephanie Mullins says, she, yeah, we called the police when they were putting up the fence. Yeah, Eisberg came out on August 11th, 2022. I was putting up a white vinyl fence. He never, ever trespassed me that day. He ended our conversation with, you know, it's a civil matter. And I said, yes, I, it is. I held my tongue and what I wanted to end that with was, so what are you doing here? The city has, we had multiple surveys, Mullins says. The city has basically, they just took out her, her fence. Yeah, I was here for that, Beaman says. Stephanie Mullins, and you know that section is, nothing is supposed to go there, not a bush, a plant. That's what Public Works has told us. I'd love to know who that Public Works person was. We've had lots of surveys. Sure we have. We have the original survey. We have a retracement of the original survey. We have a retracement that Matthew Schlisch did, which I'm sure he did a survey. All retracements of this original. But yet what does the city keep using? They keep using 5261 Northeast Maybrook Road, First Platte, which Robert Anderson never signed or sealed.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Vollenwider.
From the state requirements, take a look at it.
All right, we're going to move on to committee reports.
Encroachment policy?
You don't have the floor anymore, Ms. Vollenwider, I'm sorry. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Finance and Budget Committee met yesterday and we've started going over next year's budget. We had a presentation about the general fund and the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. We'll have another special meeting on May 20th to discuss the business and industry tax and then I think another meeting on June 3rd and probably stealing staff's thunder from Roundtable, but I just wanted to kind of lay that out because we'll have some exciting budget stuff coming to council in June. So we're, we're vetting that now in finance and budget. And some great expansion requests for some new police officers, new resources for police and fire. So I think a lot of good work there.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Demoral.
Just wanted to announce that January, or May 13th, which is Monday, there will be a Public Works meeting in the chambers here at 4:30 P M.
Thank you. Councilmember Prior.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a C E D C meeting tomorrow night at 5:00 and I'm chairing it, which means somehow I'll probably screw it up, but we're still having a meeting, so thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes us to council comments. I don't really, okay, go ahead, Councilmember Prior.
Sorry, I just wanted to say back to, when they were talking about water and the way that our water tastes, we do have really good water. We, everywhere I go, I always compare it back to Lee Summit water and Lee Summit water is the best water, especially, I don't know if you've had Florida water, but it's so gross. And Clinton, Missouri water is not my favorite, but Lee Summit water is really good. So, thanks.
Thank you. I think by the end of the week, we should receive something from the E D C with regard to the fact that they passed, or passed their drafted bylaws, which they would, first off, they accepted the red line, or the, our response to them. So they, they did pass that last week. They also adopted, didn't adopt the bylaws. They approved of the draft of the bylaws and they will be getting that to council, but they want it to come to council at the same time that it goes to their investors. So they're timing it. But it's not going to one person before others, so. So, and then they're working on a timeline for the summer. It's a pretty aggressive timeline, but good news. All right, next would be staff roundtable.
Thank you, Mayor. Written report under staff roundtable, that's our draft capital improvement plan that is married up with our budget process. That plan is out for public review and public comment right now, has been out for a while. And the public comment period will close on May 13th at midnight. So you can go online and submit any public comments about, about the capital improvements plan. That's a, a, a pretty significant plan that goes into place for this community to make investments in all of our infrastructure and facilities and things of that nature. So if, if folks haven't looked into that, it's, it's a really great document, planning document that we use.
document that we use for budget processes and, and of course, our capital improvements. I'll add a little bit to the Finance and Budget Committee actions. The Finance and Budget Committee, let me back up a little bit. So, April 9th, I presented to you a lot of ideas and recommendations that have come out of our Attraction, Satisfaction, and Retention Team, so our ASR teams, to think of how we could create a culture here that is very attractive to quality employees, retains quality employees, and things of that nature. One of those was a change from our loggers program, from a five-year final average salary to a three-year final average Sally, salary. We did present that to the Finance and Budget Committee in advance of the budget presentation, and the, the committee authorized staff to go ahead and put the public notice out, the public posting of that potential change. So, we have done that. It's on our bulletin boards, and the documents have been sent to the proper folks to start that process. So, I did want to create an awareness that we, we've carried the ball down the field a little further, that notice is up, it's a 45-day notice, and then any, those matters would come back to this body for, for direction and decisions after that. And then I'm, I'm, I know all of you are aware, but just the landfill, the governor signed the landfill bill, and so, we, we are thankful that that has been dealt with and, and behind us now. So, I believe that's it. Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Demoro.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Denning, just to, just to clarify, on, on the, the loggers change to 36, the 45 days have started, correct?
Starts today. The posting went up today.
And that, that, the, the predicate there is that the, the council needs to have the first and second readings done within 45 days? Am I correct?
No, after that 45-day period, then I think the provisions, got them with me. I think after that 45-day period, then the council can take action.
After 45 days?
It has to be, we have to be clear of that 45-day period.
All right?
Now, having said that, the council can, is that, yep. So, at the Finance and Budget Committee, we, we did talk about, the committee said, "Go ahead and bring the proposed ordinance forward for first reading, just to have that awareness at the council level, but not do the second reading until after we've cleared that 45-day period." Does that make sense? Introduce it, first reading, allow for that 45-day period to come and go, and then take final action.
For the clarification?
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Denning, anything else?
That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we need to read into a closed session. Councilmember Demoro, thank you.
Mayor, pursuant to Section 610021 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body, or any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body, or its representatives and its attorneys, I move for closed session.
Second.
Thank you. I've motioned to go into closed session by Councilmember Demoro, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Any discussion? Seeing none, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Demoro?
Aye.
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Rader?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye. Thank you.